Okay, it is 2:30. So we will get started with the water and wastewater rates analysis.
Is that time of year? This item was on your, on the agenda planner at the moment for December 2nd. So the intention is to walk you through the study session today, give you some time to think about it, bring it back to you in a couple of weeks. This is kind of an annual update that we provide and we have modified the format and tried to learn a little bit from past conversations and concerns raised. Debbie and Tara have done all the heavy lifting and I'll, and Martha, that's right, and I'll turn it over to them.
Just the numbers. Just the numbers. So today, we are going to talk water and wastewater rates. We're going to, I thought it was important to kind of look back at the bill and kind of understand it because there are different criteria that we look at for different portions of the bill. So if you're thinking, how many, how many customers do we have? How much water do we, do we produce? How much sewer do we process? They're different, we use that information for different purposes within the bill. So I thought it was important that I kind of look at that basic bill and kind of give you an idea of where those, that information is used in the bill, just kind of getting back to the basics. We'll look at the current rate study, which we adopted last year. And as you may or may not recall, we adopt a five-year rate plan every year, and then every year we come back and we update that by changing it or not changing it. So we'll look at those, see what we did last year. We'll look, look at some of the assumptions that are in the data, just so you kind of have an idea of what projects we're considering, what, how much we're thinking it's going to cost us more in personnel and, and different costs within the assumptions that we're making. We'll look at the actual analysis data. We won't go into great detail, but it's all provided there. Then we'll look at what our proposed 2020 rates are, and then we'll also look at those, look at our rates, our current rates compared to other cities and other, because I know that's important for us to know because we're always hearing that our water rates are so high. So we thought, we always think it's important to compare ourselves to our peers. So first of all, on the bill itself, there are really, we're paying for, we're ignoring in this whole conversation, any sanitation or trash fees that are on your bill. That's a whole different fee that's just, that's developed in the comprehensive fee. This is only water and wastewater. So those are the two subsections that we look at on the, on the bill. We had a monthly meter fee on the bill for water, for both water and wastewater. That's based on the size of the meter. And then we have a consumption fee for both water and wastewater. The consumption charge for water is typically exactly what you use. The consumption charge for wastewater, for most users that have been in the system for a while, is their average winter quarter that we calculate for January, February, March of the current year, and then we use that from April to the next April for, kind of to determine how much would you, was your lowest usage of water? And then we apply the sewer fees to that. That way, you're not paying exactly, it's just an easier way to do it. It's what a lot of municipalities actually do. So those are the four different sections.
So, we're talking about residential, right?
Yes.
Okay. So there are different sized meters?
Yes. Residential, do any residents have different sizes?
Yeah, they have 5/8, 3/4, 1 inch, maybe even up to an inch and a half in large irrigation systems, so.
Okay, so if they've got an irrigation system, they end up changing out the meter to a bigger meter for that?
Could be bigger.
If you're just a regular residential, are all the reg, I mean, the ones that doesn't have that stuff, are all those meters the same size?
They have the option of being, in the rate analysis, I haven't flipped to that page yet, in the head here, but we have 5/8, 3/4, 1 inch, inch and a half, 2-inch meters. So those are the sizes. And probably from inch and a half down with, to what you can see on the residential meter.
So how, I mean, I guess, does it say on your bill which one you have? I mean.
We know which size, we know what size they are, and they base the bill on that size of the meter. You want to know what size you have, don't you?
Well, no, I guess what I'm trying to get at.
Anybody need a larger?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why anybody would need a larger meter if, unless they had, you know, unless they were doing a lot of irrigation and stuff like that. So I mean, I guess my question was, do, do most of the residential houses have the smaller meter so they're charged the less in there?
They do.
Or is there a mixture and people don't know and they're being charged more?
When we have a chance and we talk with them, we try to size the meter to what their demands are. Even commercial industrial properties, we try to make sure they get the right sized meter, so they're not paying extra for a meter they don't need.
So if someone, a builder comes in, pulls a permit, how's the size of the meter to say?
For the residential, in most cases, they're probably going to get 1 inch if they're in the new subdivisions, and maybe 3/4 inch if they're in an apartment, you know, a duplex or something where they don't use much water. They're going to be in that range.
Go ahead.
One and 2 meters, or either 3/4 or an inch. If they have a large irrigation, they might get up to an inch and a half. It's all, the size of the meter is based on the volume of water through the meter. And so, trying to get that out of a home builder or a house, it's through fixture units. We do pretty well with commercial properties because they usually have someone designing on residential, where even 3/4 or 1 inch, they have irrigation. Unless they have a large pool, large irrigation, maybe larger so that they can go faster up to 50 gallons a minute through 1 inch, or 20 gallons a minute through your meter, is what a size to treat or to measure.
Okay.
We try to work with them and get them what they need because as you get into the larger meters, there are much more difference. The 5/8 inch meters today is 5.94, 3/4 is 9.46, and 1-inch meter is 12.83. So, you know, you could double your cost for a month if you could get by with a 5/8 inch meter as low as a 1 inch. Those would be probably in a small duplex, small house like that, or an apartment, which is washer dryer, those type of things, have a rack of meters. Sounds easy, but there's.
No, it don't.
No, it doesn't. Now is going to be my follow-up question. So like, if your water consumption is reduced drastically, is that something where like consumers should contact the water department and, and ask if they've got the appropriately sized meter so that they're either not paying overages?
Right.
Or they're not paying for a lot more capacity than what they need?
Yeah, it's always.
Do you have to pay to change it out?
No, usually, we change the meter out for them, but they'd have to come in and talk about their use and their land and go through there. It's, it's something that we look at all the time.
Five commissioners get different meters.
Yeah, well, see, there's going to be five.
But that's in general, with the amount of land and what they use at the property, gallons per minute, it sets what the meter needs to be on size.
Okay, I think I understand now.
It's about, you can, how much water do you need at your house? Because once you get so large, so much flow, then it creates so much friction through the meter that you don't have water pressure.
And Martha mentioned it, you may not have caught it, but as we review commercial industrial plans more so than residential, there is a fixture count, which is an actual, how many sinks and toilets and tubs do you have? And there's, there's some science behind that, the size of the meter.
So if you start having pressure problems?
You might be trying to run too much water through your, through your system. Because it's, the more flow that goes through a water meter, the higher the head loss is through that, or pressure loss, so.
Okay.
It's uneasy, but we don't make anything easy. That's what drives how much, and then if we were talking to commercial industrial, and for residential, we also talked about what size meters do they need. Sometimes they think if we have an inch and a half line, we need an inch and a half meter. But the line was sized for pressure loss. So now you're thinking, how many gallons you need to do it. So it takes a lot of conversation with customers to get to the answer, and sometimes we have luck, sometimes you don't. They just want what they want.
And the reason I laugh is it only took me the first two years of my career to understand the hydraulics behind pressure and flow, and now they're not the same thing. But that's a whole nother story.
So then we wanted to look at, we adopted 187641 last December, which set the rates for effective 2011, 2019. And as you see, we set those rates for the next five years, and those assumptions were all based on a 3.5% increase over that five-year period. And we do the same thing every year. So instead of just leaving those, that, that rate schedule, which we could do, we look at it every year to come back to the numbers and make sure that they're all kind of running where we think they should, and kind of to see if we need to make any adjustments or something's come up that we hadn't considered. Just, it gives us that option, and also it gives us the option to either decrease, leave them the same, or increase. So in this particular bill that we're looking at, the top part is wastewater. The first line is that meter charge that I was telling you about, that monthly charge. The second line is the consumption, so that's per thousand gallons. The second section is for water, and it lists all those different sizes and meters, and that's the monthly meter fee. And then the consumption charge is at, at the bottom of that page. Within our resolution, we also have, have excess use charges, which was a decision we made many years ago about how to charge people when we went through the whole conservation of water issues in the early 2000s. The city decided to go through the excess use charge program. And so this, this just kind of enable, it states that if you go over a certain percentage of your average winter amount, that you're going to pay extra for that extra dollars. So it's encouraging people to conserve water. It's basically where the theory or intent was in, in establishing those excess use charges.
I've got a quick question about the previous slide. I'm assuming that all of those, those increased fees represent that 3.5% universally.
Yes.
In years past, some years, do we increase some fees but not others? Meaning like, you might have your water meter charges go up one year, but not necessarily like your rate charge, or vice versa?
You could.
We have, and we, we have done it in different percentages.
Right.
From what I could tell, I didn't go back to the beginning.
Right.
But in the last few years with the data that I saw, we, there have been times when we would increase one a certain percent and increase another a different percent.
I got you.
I didn't see anything where we didn't increase one, but we increased the other. But you could.
Right.
Because they're all treated separately.
Right.
So the monthly water, the monthly wastewater, the consumption for water, and the consumption for wastewater are all treated separately. So we could, we could increase or not all of those four separate items.
Would it be, would it be possible to take a look back, say like, and see what the, what the charges were like 10 years ago across the board? Or if there was, if you can calculate, calculate any kind of like averages for what we were doing? You know, the average account would be 10 years ago, just to kind of get an overall view of, of what things have done?
What, when did we do?
As far as the rates or the usage, or what?
Well, since you've got the different components, just, you know, what, what each one of those, what those rates were.
Were for over the 10 years?
Yeah, yeah, just, and, and I'm not saying every, not saying every year, I'm just saying maybe like 2009 or 2010, something like that, just to get some kind of historical perspective about, you know, what our rates have done.
We do have that information.
We have it in.
Because we keep track of this analysis.
Long spreadsheet.
I don't need the whole long spreadsheet.
Yeah. It goes back many years. So yes, we do have that information. I'm not sure if we'll cover some of it as we go through here.
Okay.
We have some historical data in here, but I'm not sure if we'll cover specifically what you're asking for.
Debbie, one thing I noticed, and I don't, it doesn't change anything, is that we don't do the wastewater based on a monthly, on the meter size.
No, no.
It's just a standard. We have that, no, and I, and I had a chance to review this, so I might have paid attention when I reviewed it. I just noticed that.
So it is a flat fee, but not per size? But so there's no size, it's just a flat fee?
Right.
Okay, yep, yep. Okay, so then we want, we, we wanted to take you through some of the assumptions that we're using to make, to do the analysis that we'll look at. First of all, we use expense, annual increases for personnel, 3%, benefits, benefits of 5%, supplies of 3%, services 3%, and capital outlay of 1%. We also, in the, in the current analysis, we have a 200, in 2019, we have a $250,000 transfer going to the capital reserve fund for water and wastewater. After that, we reduced that to zero. We'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation why we, we did that.
You might explain the difference between just generally water fund reserve and capital reserve.
We have, we have two funds for the water, water and wastewater. We have an operating account, which is really that. It pays all the, the operating costs of, of the entire system, well, it pays for everything. And then we have a separate fund setup, which is a reserve account that we could use if we wanted to for specific projects, or if we, some projection came in out, out of whack, and we really needed to transfer that money. So it's kind of like our, our reserve account outside of the operating fund. Now, the operating fund will have a fund balance, which we'll see, but we also have a separate fund that holds additional money. So it's like having your checking account with a balance and a savings account. Also in this analysis, as you remember, we were financing $4 million a year for waterline improvements. And our proposal was that beginning in 2021, instead of financing that, we were going to start spending out of cash, $2 million. And as we've talked about, and Martha's talked about before, we haven't been able to get $4 million done in, in this type of work because it just takes a lot of manpower to watch it and do it and, and get it all processed. So we've kind of settled on $2 million. And rather than just keep escalating what our debt financing payments are, we felt like it was a better financial decision to, to start paying a lesser amount out of cash and doing it that way. On the bottom left-hand corner are the projects that we have in these assumptions. It's kind of small up there, but I hope you can read it. So we have the South Well Field project at $32 million, which is $2 million in annual debt cost. We have the final, or we have waterline improvements, which was those $4 million annual debt service that we had issued, up to 20 million. That's about $1.5 million a year. We have the Markley Magnolia wastewater project, which is 2.1 million, which is about $182,000 a year. We have the wastewater plant improvements, that's 28 million, at $2 million a year. And we also added in here the groundwater remediation at $10 million or $580,000 a year. We know that number's not fixed, but we wanted to be very conservative in the number that we thought we were projecting.
Yeah, to that point, South Well Field is, is a commitment we've made, the Markley Magnolia project's a commitment we've made. The other three remaining items are somewhat placeholders in terms of the wastewater plant and groundwater remediation. Certainly hopeful with respect to groundwater remediation, to come in better than that. We'll know more as we go through mediation. Wastewater plant is a placeholder until we can get it designed and bid, and I'm not going to, I don't want to give you false hope that it'll come in drastically different, but we'll see what the future holds. And then the waterline improvements, I recognize the commitment to them, but we do have some discretion there if, if we need to adjust that.
These assumptions are based on, and this is why I was telling you, there's different information that we use for different analysis. So when we're trying to determine how much to charge for that monthly fee, we're looking at how many customers do we have? And so this data gives us the information, past 10 or whatever years, of what that change has looked like. And as you can see, there was a pretty good significant change between 2012 and 2016, but from 2016 to today, it's been pretty flat. So in the assumptions, in the analysis, the assumption that we've made is that we'll have a .01% growth rate, which is very minimal. That may change, and that's why we look at this every year. You know, last year it might have been 4, and next year, according to the data, it could be 40. So those are just numbers that we really have to watch every year to see what we're doing. But we've, we're seeing them be pretty flat for the past three years, so we wanted to be pretty conservative in that number.
Is there any sense why, like, in 2012, we were at a negative 17, and then in 2014, we rebounded to 93? I mean, that, I mean, that just.
And these are water accounts billed. So it could be, I mean, that doesn't mean you're billing, you're building new buildings, it's just how many accounts we have at a certain time in, at the end of the year, or whenever that time period is.
That line slopes up, but if that was put to scale, that line is almost flat.
That's many.
I mean, it's. It's increasing about 1.2%. That's the average increase over the past eight.
So over time, over 20 years, where if that was truly to scale, I mean, for the number of change, would our line be relatively flat for the last 20 years?
20 years?
I mean, because, yeah, a change.
Yeah, we've got a little bit of trend on that line.
Well, 93 out of 20,000, that's less than, that's a half a percent. I mean, it's real small.
Right.
Absolute change. It looks dramatic on that, but it's.
Yeah.
Right. Well, and as Debbie pointed out, the average over that time period is 1.21. The assumed growth is .01%. So for the purposes of our financial estimating, I think we've got some, some fluctuation there from a high of 93 to a low of negative 17. But the, the .01% mitigates all of that in terms of being conservative.
So if a house becomes vacant and distressed?
There's no account open.
So that drops off until somebody buys it and rehabs it?
Correct.
But if a restaurant comes online, numerically, they're one for one. Consumption wise, they wouldn't save.
Are these all accounts then, rest, commercial land, residential?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was thinking, yeah, thank you for asking that.
So if you looked at 2000 to 2011, is it statistically just as flat? You say you got it going back for many, many years, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we went back that far. I didn't.
I think the numbers are probably in the, in the analysis spreadsheet, but I didn't look at, to see how, how far back they went, but I'm sure we have them.
Debbie, we collect those every year for our water use report. We have to turn in number of industrial, commercial, and residential accounts. It's a snapshot in time when we ask for that information as to who's actually using water at that specific day and time.
And it's also one of the assumption, or the statistics that we provide in our audit. You know, it's, it's something that we track, the number of users.
The other thing we looked at was how much, another assumption we make is how much, what's our usage? What's our volume? So we can calculate based on this volume going forward, what do we expect the revenues to be on the volume side? So we did the same thing. We looked at the historical data from 2011 to 2018. The average water was about 1.8, that's million, or billion, billion, because that's per thousand gallons of water, and 1.385 billion gallons of wastewater. So the assumptions that we're using are 1.75 and 1.35 going, from 2019 going forward. So again, there were, the numbers that we're using are a little bit lower, but they're, they're pretty close to what the average over the past 10 years have been. So then we get into the actual analysis, and this is, like Martha said, a huge spreadsheet. It, it looks at all of our expenses. It takes our actual expenses for the prior year. We have budgeted numbers for 2019 and 20, and then we use all of those assumptions to do the projections for the next four years. So the numbers that we've established through budget are in there, but the assumptions that we're using for the next four years are based on the budget for the prior, so the 2020 budget, we're, we're using that for 2021 and then moving forward from there, based on the assumptions that I listed earlier in, in the presentation. So we separated out by the different divisions within water and wastewater so that we can determine which portions needed to be supported by water rates, and which portions need to be supported by wastewater rates. The other thing that we put in here in the highlighted yellow section, those are future projects, and those were the ones that, some of those that I listed on the assumptions page. So those are future debt. There's also the actual debt that we have incurred is the section above that. So those are the actual bonds that we've issued, or notes, or, or loan agreements that we have out, what those payments are. The section in yellow is assumptions on what those payments would be based on the amount and, and the number of years that we would debt finance those projects. So as you can see, we've been taking these projects into account for many, many years as we look at our projected needs for revenue. And the reason we tried to do that was because we didn't want to get to, for example, 2023 when we have a $2 million debt go on and have to raise rates by 10 or 15% to cover that cost. So we've been trying to kind of build that up a little bit at a time so that, that we didn't have rate shock when we got some of those bigger projects, especially with the two parts, the two big projects that we have going now with the wastewater plant, the water plant.
Speaking of wastewater plant, have we reported KBG permitting requirement?
We talked about it sometime in the schedule.
CIP, during the CIP.
Talked about the schedule.
Have the NPDs permit, the timeline come in by then?
Yes, we talked about the schedule.
So essentially, we're on a five-year clock.
Right. We talked about it.
Right. And if you don't remember, that's, when she gets her license in five years, they're expecting something to be done, and that's that, to have that wastewater plant. That's kind of what they're telling us that we need to have happen.
Done and running for a year and proving that what we did does, does the job it's required to.
Yeah, it's all discharge permit driven in the end, in terms of meeting certain discharge limits.
So we go through the whole, we go through this whole analysis, and then on, on page 11, we get to the bottom, and there's kind of some summaries of what the total expenses are for each year, the, the expected expenses. And based on the rates that we're projecting and that we're recommending that we do, then, then we can project what the revenue will be, and that's those two blue lines on page 11, as we go forward from 2021 to 2024. Just below that section shows where, what our fund balance is, and this is just in the operating fund. So at the end of 2018, we had about $9 million in there. And you can see as we move out, that number kind of goes up, and then it starts coming back down. So by the time we get to 2024, based on these projections, it's at $2.8 million. And if you recall, our fund balance target for this account is $5 million. Now, we do have the capital reserve fund, which is the bottom gray section. It has $7.8 million in there at the end of 2018. And based on the budgeted transfers that we have going in there, that number will change a little bit as we move forward if we don't take those out. I don't know why that number didn't come out there. It will on the next page. The line in green, that is, that's the number of days that we could, we could, see how I can explain this. Based on the cash that we have on hand, it's the number of days that we could operate with that cash that we have on hand. So it takes the operating expenses, total operating expenses excluding capital and debt, and it divides it by 365 and says, this is how much you need per day. This is how much you're saying you have on hand in cash. So this is how many days you could, if you got nothing else, if, if you did exactly what that said, that's how many days you could survive on that. And that, we like that to be about six months, but we'll see that number fluctuate quite a bit too as we, as we go through and add some of these other debt service projects. So that's really the data that we collect. And then the next page, starting on page 12 is where we look at establishing these rates and how that affects what we're, what we're doing. The top of page 12 kind of determines how much water revenue we would need just to pay part of our operating expense. So this is the amount that we use to calculate the monthly fee, and this is where those 20,000 account holders come into place. So we're saying if, if, for example, in 2019, if we had 20,000 customers and we charged them an average of this amount of dollars on their meters, this is what we would collect. And then the water revenue needed is, is about 16% of the total operating cost for just water. And so we do that analysis for water and wastewater. We try to calculate what those amounts would be just for the monthly fee. And then we look at the usage side of the, which is where most of our revenue is, and we use that 1.75 and that 1.35 million numbers to kind of calculate, okay, how much would we need to get enough revenue to support the expenses for water and wastewater from consumption so that we can kind of come out even and, and we don't, in the future, go out and do the negative fund balances. So as you can see on all of these lines where it's highlighted in green, we're making assumption that we're increasing every one of those four fees 3.5% each year. And, and the kind of, the pages before kind of show you what that does to the totals. So page 14 shows you kind of what does that do to the homeowner. This is all residential calculation. So basically, what it's showing is that with a 3.5% increase, the change between 2019 and 2020 for a conservative user, which for, might be a single couple, or, you know, a condominium or something like that, we would estimate that that bill would change about $1.25, or the 3.5%. For a typical residential user, which is about 5,000 gallons, and assuming that their winter quarter was about 5,000 gallons, we would estimate that their bill would go up in 2020 about $2.39. And then for a higher user, which would be 20,000 gallons, that, that amounts $5.68. And so this, this sheet just kind of shows you, year over year, what that increase is on that bill for those, just kind of three different levels of users. is on that bill for those, just kind of three different levels of users. One thing I thought was important to remember too is, we're looking at seventy dollars and fifty-six cents for five thousand gallons of water. That's the total amount that it costs somebody for water and wastewater, this average typical consumer, and comes out the value be about one cent per gallon. And if you compare that to what we're paying for other things, milk, gas, we're paying two dollars, two fifty a gallon, water's pretty good. I mean, if you, even if you look at bottled water, you're paying a whole lot more than you are to get your service water. And we don't drink all that water, but we do use it for some. So then we wanted to look at, how do we compare to other company or other cities? We thought the visual was kind of interesting because the blue, the vertical lines, the blue and the red are where Salina is. So the blue line is what the cost for a customer is for five thousand gallons of water in Salina, and the red line is the cost of ten thousand gallons of water in Salina. And you can see how we compare to some of those other cities, um, especially, and it's, it's odd because they're not consistent. So even though we may be higher than somebody at five thousand, we may be lower than them at ten thousand. So it's, it's really inconsistent to look at this data and, and kind of try to compare. And the reason is, is that every, every city calculates, and you'll see it in the next slide, I'll show it to you real quick. This is kind of a, how people calculate what their bills. So some have minimums and some have maximums, and so they, they might have a certain amount, um, I'm on page seventeen, and that, they might have a certain amount for up to two thousand gallons, and they charge you another amount. So to compare us to somebody else is very difficult because how they calculate their bills is very different. So it, it's important to kind of know that when you're looking at these comparisons. Page sixteen, what we tried to do, I'll go back to this one, is we ranked these, if you were a, a standard user of five thousand gallons, and this is just the water side, where would Salina fall? And they fall right at the bottom of the top third, um, in, in the, this pure comparison. But what was difficult is we couldn't do that for both of them because we would fall at a different spot if it went to the ten thousand gallon, um, criteria. So that kind of gives you a picture where we're at, um, and kind of how close those numbers really do fall. We're at thirty-eight, forty-eight, there's two at thirty-seven, there's a couple at thirty-five. Um, so they're not huge numbers off, then you drop down to seventeen. So you go from seventy-three to seventeen in this pure comparison, and so they're kind of really all over the place in there. And that's, and that's why I kind of stuck that page seventeen in there, because the reason they're there is for different reasons. And even what Martha and I found was, even looking at the cost of the meters, so which, which would be our monthly meter cost, those numbers are all over the place. So they're not, it's hard to compare what we have. They go from four seventy-five to fifty dollars. So it's kind of hard to, you know.
How many of those give a break on them, uh, as you use more water? We're, we're charging more as you consume more. Is that the, is there a trend there, or are the, are the majority of other cities still giving you a break for more?
Looking at page seventeen, it shows you those, that answer, heart, heart cities, the more you use, the less it costs you.
Coffee bill?
Coffee bill.
So when I was looking at, back at the winter quarter and where we put that into effect, I saw that there was, there was a lot of disparity in what cities do. There were maybe a handful that did the excess use charge, where they were charging more the more you use, and there was a group that didn't do anything, and then there was a group that was discounting it. So there, it's, there again, it's, it's really all over the place.
I think that is a really good point. If you, if you just look at that rate schedule, if the number is declining, your, your cost is going down the more you consume. And that Salina made a conscious choice to get away from that as part of our water conservation plan. And there's quite a few on here that are, are structured that way.
And our use dropped when we instituted that policy.
Yes, it did. So that kind of gets us through the analysis, and so then what we wanted to kind of just point out was, I talked a little bit about the fund balance and that target fund balance. Um, as I mentioned, the target fund balance and the operating fund for the water and wastewater is five million dollars. Um, with our projections, we'll go below that target in twenty twenty-four, and I stretched this one out a little bit farther so that you can see, because cutting it off in twenty twenty-four really didn't give you the full picture. So this assumption is the same thing, it's going to go up three and a half percent until twenty thirty-two. And so this is what it does to that fund balance, as we use more and it costs us more to operate. Now, we know, we may, we, our costs may not go up that much. We know that we, our revenues may not be the same, so it's hard to know, but that's why we do this every year. We kind of come back and go back to those numbers and see kind of where they're going at so that we can kind of set ourselves back. So if we came in next year and we figured out that, oh, we're not going to have to do all that for water remediation, then we could readjust these, these rates, our projections to say, oh, we're not going to need that, so we, we can just change those. That's why doing it every year gives us that chance to kind of update it as we go along with, as we gather information that we know, instead of that we're guess we're projecting.
Quick question, as we see that fund, um, the balance go back up after it dips, especially like in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight, are those, are we still anticipating like three percent rate increase at those points?
We are, but what we're not anticipating is any future debt. So we're assuming that these projects that we have listed are the only projects that we'll finance.
Okay, right, so, yeah.
So if we, for example, decided that we're going to debt finance something else, if we decided, I don't know what it would be in the water rule, but if it was, we are not assuming any additional projects out of debt financing. But we are assuming that that three percent, five percent continues to increase every year.
Okay, so, so, right, right, but in terms of like, um, in terms of our revenue, are we, we're, we're projecting to increase our rates three and a half percent, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The other thing that doesn't take into account, which we'll get to on the next slide, is the capital reserve balance and, and allocating some of that to try to offset some of this.
We do show that here, the capital, um, the operating reserve balance, um, at the end of twenty eighteen was about seven point eight million dollars. This one's updated without us putting that money, additional money in there. So at twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty, we basically will sit at eight and a half million dollars because we really won't be, according to what our plan is, we won't be putting any more money in there. We haven't planned to take any money out, we haven't planned to take any money, put any money in. However, we have that opportunity, we have options for utilizing that money. It's set aside for capital projects, it's set aside for whatever we deem necessary to use it for. As long as we're, we're maintaining that target fund balance, we have that cushion in that fund to kind of go with the ups and downs of the operating costs. If we're comfortable with that five million dollar target balance, then we have some leeway here to use some of this funding. So what we did here was we kind of took, looked at, okay, what are some of these big projects that we're looking at? How would, how would that affect both the operating account and the reserve account if we took advantage of using some of the money on the operating account?
I'm sorry, Debbie, did you say the, um, target's five million also on the capital reserve?
There is no target.
There is no target.
Right, it's been set aside for capital items, but, but target.
Okay.
It's not a budgeted fund, so we really have never set a target for that fund, um, but like Mike said, it's set aside for capital improvements if we, if we deem necessary. So one of the opportunity, the options that we looked at was, and we had to kind of balance out what can the, the reserve fund sustain, what can it take, and what can we, what, and what, how much will help the operating fund? So one of the opera, um, the options was, if we took half of the cost of the remediation and we funded it in cash upfront out of the, um, capital reserve fund, which we're estimating at five million dollars, there again, we don't know what that number is going to be, the savings to the operating fund would be two hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, over thirty years, that's eight point seven million dollars to the, um, operating account, taking five million dollars out of the reserve account today. One of the other options we looked at was to take one and a half years, and we kind of picked that number because we knew kind of where our target fund balance for the water account was kind of falling short. So we took one and a half years of waterline improvements, which would be a savings in the operating count of three million dollars, and it'd be three million dollars coming out of the capital reserve. The other thing we looked at, we could offset other capital improvement expenses to maintain our target, target fund, fund balance however we wanted to. So if we, if something came up, we could pay out of, out of that fund. So what I did on the next page is I kind of showed you, with those two options that we, we looked at, the remediation, half the remediation and the three million dollars in waterline improvements, what would that do to those fund balances? In the top section, you can see that, um, the adjusted fund balance then only falls below the target in twenty twenty-seven, and that's pretty minimal. If we, um, if we do the, well, the first one is the, uh, the, the five million dollar remediation. So it falls below in twenty twenty-six, but not nearly as much as it had been. So it does give us some relief, and we're not going as close to the bottom as we would think, but we're still picking that back up as we go further out. So our, our window of being below our target is much less, and it, and a much less of degree if we do that, if we chose that option. And the second option in the operating fund on the top, you can see that we only go below our fund balance target in twenty twenty-seven, it's pretty minimal, it's two, a little under two hundred thousand dollars. And in looking at history, I would estimate that, that we wouldn't even hit that because we typically don't spend everything that we've budgeted anyway. Um, so that kind of gives you a picture of what that would do, those two options would do to the operating account. And this exact, it's dollar for dollar in the reserve account. If we take five million dollars out, we leave three and a half million dollars in there. If we take three million dollars out, we leave five and a half million dollars in there. So that, this just kind of gives you a picture of what those two options would do to those funds. And that's assumed, that's assuming no change to our projected, our fees. So it's still projecting the three and a half percent increase, um, but it also gives you some options if we would choose to do that, if we wanted to do something with those fees.
And I, I would offer, I guess, I think you can go back one slide, Debbie. Another way to look at it possibly is in twenty twenty-seven, that's kind of the lowest point of the, the fund balance and the assumed scenario. So that's three point two, three point one million dollars short of the five million goal. The, we don't have to recover each one of those annual shortfalls if it's truly just a reserve that's being maintained. And so by way of savings and/or funding planned expenses with capital reserve, if we, if we identified three point two million dollars, we're able to get the fund balance back to that five million dollar target. So if we can save on groundwater remediation, if we can save on the water wastewater plan, or if we can redirect funds from the capital reserve to planned capital items, uh, then we'll, we'll be able to maintain that target balance.
And we could actually do that as we go along.
Yeah.
I mean, we could determine every year, what point, at what level are we going to be this year, pretty close. I mean, we wouldn't be able to do it exactly because we can't wait till December thirtieth and figure it out, but we could kind of figure out at what point we feel like we're going to be once we get more actual numbers, and then we could actually just do a transfer to pay for some of those capital, or transfer some of those expenses from the capital items out of the operating fund into that reserve fund.
Based on your transfer of the capital reserve funds, that's something that we'll be looking at next year. I mean, because you had them going in in twenty-one, so that would be something next year we'll be looking at.
Yes, the one from operating to capital reserve?
Yes.
Yeah. We have it in our.
Because it's for twenty-one, so you'd have to look at, so you're doing it during.
Was your question from operating to capital reserve or from capital reserve to operating?
Capital to operating.
Oh, we don't have any, we are not planning to do anything until we get direction as far as from capital to operating.
But that would be something we'd discuss next year.
Yes.
For twenty twenty-one, yeah, that's what I'm saying, because that's when you.
Or we could amend twenty twenty, whichever.
Yeah, I, I don't think that there'll be a sense of urgency to necessarily amend twenty twenty.
Right.
Right, I agree.
Right.
Are those projects that are being financed, are they being financed through the water, uh, Kansas Water Office? And how?
Not all of them, but a good share of them are, yes.
And so that's, we get an advantageous rate.
Right.
So we've been a long time without a recession. Uh, what happened, do we know how to predict what happens if we move out of these fancy economic times?
If the interest rate changes?
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know, buying power would change that bad, or, or expenses would go up. I don't know off the top of my head what a percentage would, would tweak to me. On past projects, you've kind of done that analysis, hadn't you?
We have looked at what, using, uh, general obligation bonds or something as opposed to state revolving loan fund, and they're usually the difference of nearly four percent to two and a half, and that's why it makes some sense to use the state revolving loan fund for the projects we can in groundwater contamination, maybe we pay for it separately as opposed to a higher interest.
Do they both have an administrative fee to, to implement it?
Yes. You would with the bonds, the state revolving loan fund, they gave us our money back though.
So you don't have the same, yeah.
Gave us money back for this last year and not charging that fee at this point in time.
Well, one other thing to note, um, the assumption on the groundwater remediation is that thirty-year financing. Uh, we've checked and, and bond council indicates that we can do that, and it's a way to spread, obviously there's more cost of borrowing, but it spreads that cost out, and it's kind of a one-time, uh, solution that, and in fact, some of the remediation may be going on that long in terms of, uh, the work that has to be done. So we, we've assumed an extended timeframe for that payment.
Are the projections here based on a thirty-year?
Yes.
Okay. Are those able to be paid off early, the state funds?
You can pay them off early. There's some amount of, um, what your loan, you have to owe a certain amount before you pay them off early, but, um, usually with the low-interest run, loan, they're.
You don't want to pay, yeah?
They're usually our better deal for, for funding and using our cash for something else, but, uh, but you can. And, uh, partly Magno is fifteen years in a water, in wastewater projects, other projects are set up for twenty years repayment.
Um, I'm going back to the water rates a little bit, so if we're going to have fourteen years of three point five percent increase, that, that gets us up close to fifty percent increase in the water bill in, in, in fourteen years, and.
That's just the number we used, but if, if we look at that table with the, on page twenty, where we start looking at the, are there out, fund balance?
Right, and.
I think there's opportunity at some point when we get to that point, when it kind of turns around, that those numbers can change. We just use that number because that's the number we're using for the next five years.
Right, but really, we're not seeing any kind of stabilization in our rates, at least through, um, twenty thirty or twenty thirty-one?
Yeah, I think, I don't know what the slide number is, but I think it begins with the assumptions on slide six, um, in terms of just annual increases and, and known expenses. And you've got that combined with individual projects to be financed, and that kind of drives the, the revenue that's needed and resulting rates, but.
Oh, I get, I, you know, I get how we, how we got there. But, yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, you start taking that times ten years or twelve years or fourteen years or whatever, and, um, you know, half again as much on a water bill. I mean, that's, you know, you're starting to get really noticeable there. So I just wanted to make sure I was assuming that correctly.
If you went back a little.
But you're also assuming that the cost of doing business is going to rise by that level over those fifteen or twenty years, and so that's.
Yeah, I guess I don't think that stabilization means never a price increase.
Right.
It just means staying relative to all the other factors and our, and our pure cities.
And we have equipment on our plate right now, and just in terms of projects, that maybe things will settle out a little bit and give us an opportunity for some savings and back that off.
And as we start to pay off some of those earlier waterline debt things, that that's why you see that number starting to kind of go back up, because we're starting to pay some of that older debt off.
And then, speaking of that, Martha and I had a conversation, she predictably was very attached to our ongoing water main maintenance, which I think we are exceptional compared to other communities in our ability to make that commitment annually. It's not to say that it's, it's something that should be deferred, it's, it's going to be a challenge for a long, long time, but we are in an unfortunate position to be able to fund that. I'd say the same about streets at the moment too, but that's a whole other fund.
Yeah. Recession, it all goes out the window.
I, I think streets are noticeable, but I, they're above ground, water on sewers not so noticeable.
Any more questions?
Comments?
Can I ask one that's, well, it's off topic, but it is a utilities question. I just wondered, um, were we kind of.
I just wondered, were we kind of stood with the molybdenum thing? I mean, have we been measuring, I mean, have we figured out?
We have killed that snake.
We have.
We have. We immediately went out and started analyzing our wastewater at industrial pump stations and we found two culprits.
Okay.
And we addressed them immediately with those, with those culprits. I'm not going to say them out loud because we're still working with them on process, but the last three or four tests of molybdenum in our tanks, we've been 40 or less.
And that's where we want, that's where we want to be?
75 is, is the line.
Is the cutoff? Okay, good. So those...
So we have found it and worked with the customers that use that product and they have changed their ways willingly because I think they understood it was a real issue for us. So they stepped right up and did what they had to to help us solve our problem.
Good deal.
So we were fortunate to find it that quickly and get it resolved that quickly. And we're processing our biosolids in, by the tank load and testing every time just to ensure that requirements would say we didn't need to, but I told everybody in our group, we're going to test at least for a year or two until I feel like we're past that. We decide, because our plant was designed and constructed before the biosolids rule went into place. So we just, I've really been trying to make what we got work. So when we design and redo the new facility, we'll be set up with biosolids as a part of the requirements and how to deal with it. So it'll be a little less cumbersome for staff than it is right now, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we're testing before application as well.
Every time.
With the opportunity to react.
Every tank, every time, not just once a quarter, every tank, every time.
Awesome.
And do I recall that you went and tested the bottom of the boxes or something?
Yeah, previously we were pulling the sample from the bottom.
From the top.
It was probably more concentrated.
And now it's composite all the way through the tank. And we have a mixer and doing, we're doing a lot of things that makes it much more effective as opposed to just pulling some off of the bottom that may have been concentrated. So it's more work, more effort, but it's definitely keeps us well in compliance. So we've, we've been very successful from almost day one with the process that we're doing and now the molybdenum numbers are way down and everything's... We're going to continue monitoring for another, all of next year, just to be safe and be sure that we're on track. But we were fortunate, we got, got that figured out quickly.
Just one other thing on, aside from the issues of redundancy and drought protection, an argument was made that our water usage was not coming close to where the downtown well field would not cover us. With the revised protection for growth, are we farther away from needing an alternate source of water? Aside from the redundancy issue and drought protection? Or is that still the driving force?
I'm trying to bring up the old water treatment plant, and I use the word old because Debbie just said we didn't know if we had more projects. But the last upgrades at our downtown water treatment plant was in 2000. And so she's, I call her she, I don't know why, but that water treatment plant is reaching its useful life at 20 years. So there will be some things that need to be done down there with equipment and different things to, to stay in good compliance. We did add a second supply line to the water treatment plant, which was a big worry for me. We had a single line coming in from our wells, under the river, under the railroad tracks. All of those leave room for problems and it was only 1935 when it was new, so plenty of riverbank, different channel things that could be a problem. So we brought one in from the north so we can get part of our water supply in from a separate line into the plant. So we got some redundancy there that we've already paid for and put in place. And we vowed our well field where we can take water and get a portion of it from both places. But there's always a potential for the 2000 facility and not everything was new then either. That was the last upgrade we did. So there's always the fear of something old and something failing for us, which would totally limit our volume of water that we can treat out of that facility. So there's always a lot of balls in the air. So it's not just drought or just redundancy, it's, it's a lot of pieces that are moving and age. Rod would probably say, sitting down there with, last thing you told me on the wastewater plant, you just upgraded it. I told you about 30 years ago. Now the water plant's 20 years ago. Time goes pretty quickly and all of those things are like your car or your home. You're always trying to stay ahead of what might be that next bad thing to happen to you, but you know, we can only think as far ahead as we can, but there's plenty of room. So it's, it's not a straightforward answer. There's many moving parts.
Right, well, and, and the important part of that answer is it's not just demand.
No, no, there's, it's making sure everything you own. If we lose a single basin, we cut our capacity at the plant half. If we lose our river desilding basin, which is the structure that has fallen in and the wells have fallen out over the course of time, it's very old, then we would not be able to treat river water. So there's structures on site that if they fail, or the equipment interferes to where you can't, this is way more than you want to know.
Well, no, no, actually.
Ask me a question, but the equipment, some of the equipment in the river desilding basin is much more than 20 years old. I think I did it 30-plus years ago. So it's, so it's trying to keep up with all of that and having some, some redundancy is, is really the issue. A lot of moving parts that make our water, make our water supply.
Well, in our water study, it essentially came out of the drought.
Yeah.
So while there are some, some, there is some commentary in there about assumptions about growth, it's very much driven by drought protection. And we, it inventoried a number, a number of options and we've been checking them off. You don't need it until, and at the point you need it, it's too late to get started.
Right. And we look 50 years out, you know, we're trying to, you can't really build a water plant to do five years or four years or, you know, we've set up our facility to use that and truly the, that South Water Plant has been a topic in discussion for 30 or 40 years as to whether we should build it and when it should come into play. So it's been a topic for a while.
Yeah, Martha, when you look at the, the issue with the drought and the, you know, the river going dry, and I know we've had those discussions before, what's it been, three out of the last nine, 10 years that we've had concerns about?
06, it went really dry. 012, it would have went dry if we had not coordinated our efforts with all of the users. And in 2018, we were set up to coordinate those efforts again and our poor sister City of Hayes got pounded with rain and that filled up the reservoir. But here in Salina, we were still in, in drought mode. It was just the river was, had plenty of water because the lake was full. And now we're starting out with the lake down very low because they've let all of that out to repair the dam. So we're well below conservation level and who knows, you know, how the rain and what it'll do for that, but it's to a point where they're not tending to let any real water out of the lake.
If you saw in the paper today, I thought it was noteworthy that Hayes is still trying to figure out making use of the water rights they bought at the R9 Ranch in 1995. That has been one of their key, well, they funded it pretty heavily and that's been one of their key drought mitigation efforts and they've been working on it since 1995.
So I'm sorry, to Mayor Davis's question, just to follow up on it before I forget, what, what percentage capacity are we operating at the, at the present water plant? Is there any sense of that?
In the summer, where roughly we hit about 10 million gallons a day.
And the capacity is what, 12?
The, if every...
If everything's working?
If everything's working, the thing about the water plant that's different than wastewater plant, they don't have you have a supply, an additional basin. So if one series of basins is out, we have 10 MGD. Everything's working, we have 20 million gallons a day.
Between river and well water?
Yes, that's all together because we run through our softening basins. As long as both parallel trains work, we can treat 20.
So our experience in 2006 was no river water and, and usage was exceeding the available groundwater and...
And when that happens, the groundwater level drops and our downtown well is all very close together. All 15 of our wells are in about a mile and a half, so the cone of influence or the drawdown of the wells is great.
More concentrated.
And it takes away from the capacity that we can pull out of the wells, which we put VFDs on them to try to avoid, when you pull the well too low, then you pull a lot of air and create cavitation. And so in case you do that too often, then you spend 45, 50,000 replacing the pump and going that route. So the groundwater levels drop when you're in drought, which makes sense. Then we, instead of pulling 10 MGD out of a well, it drops to 8 MGD.
If I might chime in here?
Go ahead, Rod, you're, you've been following this.
You know, consumption at that time was peaking at about 12 million a day, 12 or 13 during some of the summers.
We had some 14 MGD days.
And so if you have 9 million capacity and you're trying to use water at 14, that doesn't work very well. And we did some, I don't know if we call them emergency conservation measures, but they were certainly very pointed to try to get that consumption down to where we could survive on the, on the wells alone.
The water conservation rates do for us it...
Yeah, and it, and it did have an impact.
And it prevents from a lot of costs in our distribution system. If you're moving 14 million gallons a day through your distribution system versus 10, our water main breaks and the pressure in the system goes up. So there's a lot of costs that go with, a lot of value that comes out of the, what I call the water conservation rates and using less volume of water. It really helps on a lot of different things, but in a drought, if the water's not there, it's just not there. And Salina was identified as a drought-prone community through the Kansas Water Office for a while, which is not where we like to see ourselves. Like, one of the, the only large community in our area that was drought prone and that was totally because of the lack of river. And so we've been working diligently through our plan to try to do better.
Yeah, and I don't think a lot of this is just unique to Salina. Municipalities have a tendency to, to allow things to age. And I don't know, going forward, you know, if you, if you own real estate, you replace the windows at one point, then you do the siding at one point, you do cabinets. And what we do is we wait until we get to, not quite a crisis point, but then we have a big expense. And I don't know how future commissions look at that because as a commission, it's great to sit up here and say, we haven't raised water rates in X number of years, we haven't raised taxes, but, but you have major assets that are depreciating and have, you know, need money spent on them. And I don't know how we budget that for the future, you know, once we get all this done. It's something you've got to look at. And again, I think, isn't Wichita putting in a new water plant? Didn't I see, is that a 500, 550 million dollars?
We're anxious to see what our rates do.
Yeah.
Wichita and Derby is kind of...
Yeah, and I think you'll see others, you know, I mean, municipalities or everyone, I think there are some of their facilities are getting names.
What Hayes did was a, I think Mike or Jacob probably knows, was a sales tax back in 1995, I think it was 1% and they've been just piling that money up. But there is no additional water rights in Hayes to have, so that's why they're...
Right, a lot of exploration there. I mean, just trying to find whatever source or solution would be. I mean, they've looked at, I mean, they had 25, 30 years of studies. They looked at Wilson Lake, they looked at Cedar Bluff, different things, but the, the one that they've settled on is the R9 Ranch, which is south of Kinsley. So it's, it's 65 miles from Hayes.
In a different watershed, right?
Right.
Over the hill.
Which is a plan, is to fill the well field there and pipe it, so.
It's about a hundred million dollar project.
I think the last 80, 89 million dollars, but they've been putting money back for 25, 30 years. So they have 40 million dollars in the bank, just waiting on the project for approval.
Is there a, yeah, because this, I'm always intrigued by the, the finances. Consumption earns you money, but we preach conservation. Is there a magic, consumption below which it begins to have a negative effect on revenue? I mean, the, the total picture revenue?
One thing about conservation is it prevents you from going out. Right now, we're using all the water rights that are available that we have for us, including the ones from the South well field. Any, any additional water we want to get would be a similar process. We, we've got to go to another reservoir, another lake or somewhere and treat a different water quality. So at some point in time, that, we, we've taken the low-hanging fruit that's economical and we can do that and it works out pretty well, but the next step will be horribly expensive. If you took water from Wilson, that's why you're not doing it because to treat water from there, the saline river and what you have to remove from it, it's very costly. So Debbie asked me this question the other day, is, well, what happens when we have no more water? What do we do? And I said, oh, you don't want to know. I said, yuck water comes into place. She's looking at me like, what's yuck water? Yuck water? And I said, well, it's excellent from a wastewater plant that's treated to be water, finished water, a water plant. But, and that's, that's actually a lot more cost-effective than trying to treat, treat the higrackish water or salty water. So there's communities that are starting into that process, but that's much more costly. So if you can avoid needing all those extra water rights and do what you need, that's more favorable than spending all the infrastructure, all the water rights, additional pipe, additional equipment and all of that. So I, I don't know what the balance is. It's, I think as long as you stay affordable and, that's why we check every year how we get with all of our other communities, if we stay reasonable for our water consumers.
Well, as we mentioned, the conservation rate had a noticeable effect and I think we've kind of settled in on consumption based on that. If we said we wanted to try to accomplish more conservation, kind of the conversation we had before, education, Hayes did some incentive type things in terms of fixtures and education and then rates, you know, if you ratch up rates, you might affect consumption all the more. Well, with respect to the deferred maintenance, I, I wouldn't disagree that, you know, we, the water plant, it might be approaching deferred maintenance, but I think years out in the future, with this generation, this time period, maybe looked at as visionary in terms of doing the water study and getting the assurance water and getting the water plant in place and getting that wastewater plant fixed and, and water main repairs, trying to be proactive. I mean, I don't know that we'll ever completely catch up, but we were trying to be ahead of some of those issues. The water usage out of the Kanaplis alone in 2006 caught us very much by surprise when they tried to change their discharge schedule just to conserve water. We were very dependent on their, their discharges that we didn't have complete control over. With assurance water, we at least have some water reserved and that, if we had that situation to do over again, that'd be an opportunity for us to call for some water and mitigate some of that, so.
As long as we have water.
Yeah, as long as it's in there in the first place.
How much your banking account? It hasn't rained and put water in it. And I, I'm really nervous about, it's been very dry and I'm hoping we have our rainfall as we have in the past. Starting out low bothers me at Kanaplis.
Following up on Commissioner Hoppeck's remark about like the deferred maintenance, when, when do we start planning for the deferred maintenance at the downtown facility? And what do, do you have just even a ballpark or what kind of scope of work are that we're looking at?
We do some maintenance on there for wells and pumps. We seem to have had a little difficulty getting some of the work I'd like to just because of our staff and kind of how we're organized at the minute to get all, everything done. But we do have $2 million that we put in the system enhancements a year, which is currently in our, our budget, and about a half million that we put in for, I call it, equipment and vehicles. And then it's a small amount for buildings. But the $2 million system enhancement, we kind of shuffle from, should we spend that on water system or do we spend it on wastewater? And we have about a million dollar sewer CIPP job that we've held off on. So we will have some additional passion or balance because we're very busy doing all of the subdivisions right now. Staff is really tied up with, I mean, they're, when we turn around, there's a new subdivision and new project and we have Markley Magnolia and Red Fox that we've been working on. So we do have, we have some projects that we're ready to put on the street. We just, we've never had very good luck. We don't have someone to pay attention and watch the project and make sure it gets built according to our plans and specs. We have a lot of experienced people in our group that have done that for years and years. So they're good at paying attention and making sure things get done and we're just shorthanded right now and trying to keep everybody doing the right thing. So I would... So I would like to think we're going to spend more money at the water plant. We spent some at the wastewater plant, set some on wastewater collection, so we kind of move our turnaround. We, so we do have funding to do some of that deferred maintenance. I don't want it to sound like we defer on it, it's just trying to sort out which piece needs it the most in our big picture. And the wastewater plant's going to take a lot of load off of this because of the new equipment, and it'll be back in service for, you know, another 20-plus years, so that'll help.
I know that we've been short of staff for as long as I've been here. But, yeah, so, I mean, is that, is that a function of just like not enough personnel trained to do that work, or do we need to take another look at? I mean, I know we've calculated a 3% increase in personnel and everything, but, I mean, do we need to look at maybe restructuring what we're paying? I mean, or for the work that's happening? I mean-
Salary studies and next year's budget for that purpose. Utilities and public works primarily are the ones that really struggle to-
It's kind of hard work, isn't it, Jim? Some of the work they have to do.
That's brutal.
And they have other options.
Not everyone lines up, and, you know, the cost to hire others to do that work makes it just almost impossible to, you know, we just don't get much work done for that amount of money, so it's-
Knowing that, knowing the market, it may cause us to take our salary schedule and say, "And those positions need adjusting in relation to other positions that aren't so hard to fill." Right now, we kind of have a salary schedule, and one thing gets adjusted, everything needs to be adjusted in relation. But we've got a long enough history that it may be indicating to us that the market's shifted, and if we're going to fill those positions, we need to be prepared to pay a premium.
We had 10 applicants that we wanted to talk to, and we were just trying to pull them in to talk to them, and we had three that came. And two of those were asking more questions and doing some research on them to try to bring them in. Had higher-paid jobs, but they were working weird hours, and they liked having a more stable job, so we're hoping we offer that and benefits that'll make a difference for them. But they haven't said yes yet, the two or so. We may have zero out of 10, that's happened before, so.
Thank you, Debbie. Enlightening us. It's 3:45.
Yeah. On this water issue, have you ever thought about not looking forward to expansion and don't issue any more consumption of water? No more economic growth? How many of you can go back and remember this project they had here about 10 years ago? They were going to hook into the Missouri River up there at White Cloud. That was a big cost, and they dropped it. So make you better think, we don't want any more new water customers, because the cost to build that canal from up there in White Cloud is going to come down south and start swinging west, and it's going to go down here between Linsburg and McPherson.
Where is White Cloud?
Up in the northeast part of the state, up there on, well, the border part of the northeast part of this state is the Missouri River. And that's where they were going to hook in. And the people down below says, "No, you ain't, you're not going to get our water." That's going to happen with this ranch out here in Edwards County. They're going to say, "Hayes, Russell, you ain't going to get it. You know, you bought your water rights, you don't own them." So you better look down the road to quit. You don't like it, but someday it's going to come home to roost. That was a big cost, billions of dollars to build that canal.
It's me of the California Aqueduct, which just runs lazily along Interstate 5, and you look over and you wonder, "I wonder what that is?" That's all the water from Los Angeles. It's just sitting there. Hope we don't get to that stage. Yeah, Joe?
Well, the drop in water usage when the, when the higher use rates went into effect was a good thing to see. It made a lot of sense. And I'm still concerned about our usage, and I might say, maybe we could use our water smarter. And the city commission would be in a position to help lead that by various ways, through ordinances, through incentives, and things like that for smarter landscaping, and I don't mean rocks, smarter landscaping, things like showerheads, assistance to corporations, you know, businesses, you know, a whole range of things to reduce our consumption across the board, because it looks like we've held pretty flat since 2012. And so, I mean, we dropped, but we didn't continue to drop because we didn't do anything else.
From what I've heard-
I just want to bring that up.
Happened in Hayes, we probably don't need to invent the first part of that, at least the first wheel on that vehicle. Imitation is the highest form. We can just do what they did. Is that available? That's publicly easily available?
Yeah, I think it was in my father's study as well.
I mean, a lot of what you said. There's, when you drive around the new neighborhoods in Hayes, they don't, they have, there's a six-foot buffer between grass and any previous surface. I mean, they don't allow sprinkler systems the way we do here. Cool season grass is not allowed the same way. I mean, it's a, culturally, it's just a different, it's kind of eye-opening. I was in Oakley, where we were on the Oklahoma Aquifer, the land of plenty water, and I think we used like 350 gallons per person per day there, and in Hayes, it's 95. I mean, it's just a stark, if you have water that's going on the street, your neighbor's going to turn you in. I mean, it's a, it's a, just a different culture there.
We actually have that here, too.
Bet your neighbor didn't turn that in. He's going back to his home.
I probably knew you would.
I've made several phone calls.
Well, I live through a drive-in LA, and it's a sobering thought when a person that bad shows up at your front door because your water accidentally got turned on on the wrong day or by your kid, and they didn't know they were supposed to. It's like, "Oh, God, we're going to jail because you turned this thing on." But it's, it's nice to turn that faucet on and water come out. Any other, you got five minutes?
Does it call you, and you're out of the country?
Right. All right, we will see you for a buck.